Good evening. I'd like to call this evening's City of Greer Planning Commission to order. My mic seems a little hot. Turned it up?
It doesn't work well enough.
Okay, alright. If there's anyone on the commission that will need to recuse themselves tonight from any of the businesses before us, you'll need to file a recusal sheet when it comes before us. I don't think it's going to affect anybody tonight. Alright, moving on, we'll move to the September minutes, September 18th meeting. I trust everybody's had a chance to look them over. Do we have any additions, subtractions, discussion?
Motion approved.
Motion and a second for approval.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Serna? Oh, Mr. Lavender?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Mr. Holland?
Yes.
Alright, moving on, we're going to the public hearing portion of the meeting tonight. We will start off with staff giving the basic information for the applications that are before us, and then we'll hear from the applicant. We're going to do things just a little differently tonight concerning the final development plan that we have before us. We're going to have the public hearing on that, and then we're going to move into new business for that particular piece, and then we will come back out of new business and go into the public hearing for the UDO discussion, because that might be a little lengthy. So, at this time, we will open the public hearing for Final Development Plan 23-00010.
Just as a reminder to the board, a final development plan is similar to a preliminary plat but for DRD or PED developments. So, docket number FDP 23-10, applicant is Arbor Land Design LLC, and the address is off of East Gap Creek Road. Parcel ID number for the record is 0536-010104100. The existing zoning is DRD Design Review District, and the request is for final development plan approval. Here's the final development plan with 90 townhome units. Planning Commission held a public hearing and recommended approval of the zoning of this property in November of 2022. That concludes the public hearing.
Please, okay. Do we have Arbor here?
Good evening. My name's Chad Carson at 22 Galington Road. I'm not with Arbor, but I am with the developer, so happy to speak on the project. Basically, what was presented the initial time, some minor changes. We had to shift the road over a little bit to account for stormwater and topography on the site. Same number of units spacing, or excuse me, same number of units. We did have to adjust the spacing a little bit, again, to give us a little bit of room to adapt for the topography on the site, stormwater, stuff like that. And as well, we tried to extend the minimum driveways as well. We normally like to do additional parking. Weren't able to on this site, but we extended the driveways to hopefully accommodate for that. But other than that, everything should look pretty much the same as when it was before you guys previously. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Alright, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak for or against Final Development Plan 23-00010? Alright, seeing none, we will close the public hearing for Final Development Plan 23-00010, and we will now move into the new business where we will have our first application, which will be Final Development Plan 23-00010.
Okay, so again, this parcel is off of East Gap Creek Road. Staff supports this request as it is consistent with the adopted site plan and statement of intent, and is in accordance with the guidelines set forth in the Zoning Ordinance and Land Development Regulations. That concludes my presentation.
Alright, I have to come back up here for any questions? You said you had to make a few minor changes?
We did. One of the main ones that you'll see, the layout is basically the same, but the road kind of curves in a little bit to the east. We're basically trying to get downhill as quick as we can toward the bottom of the site, so there's no steep inclines in the roads or anything like that. And also, the amenities did change just a bit. I think we had dog park in the first statement of intent, now we've got pickleball courts. Funny enough, our owner is renting a townhome, so he likes to have certain amenities in there, and now understands that sometimes it's better to have more options than less, so he wanted to put pickleball courts in there as well.
Did that replace the dog park, or?
But we still got room for a dog park. It's not a fenced-in area. We're planning to have like a little, like a waste pickup area, but it won't be fenced-in anymore.
You mentioned extension on the parking? No, you said you wasn't able to provide additional parking space, so instead, you were able to?
Yes, ma'am. So, we took the units, took them apart a little bit farther, so we're at 24 and 1/2 feet minimum driveway width, instead of the normal 18. So, it's not as long as we'd like to, but it's what we did to try to accommodate it a little bit.
Is that a two-car driveway or one?
Uh, one car right now, sir.
A one-car driveway, 24 foot, so they could theoretically get, eh, maybe two cars. The laws are not very big.
True, yes, sir.
So, effectively, we've got, and they don't have garages, right? Or they do? I can't remember, I'm sorry.
So, they should have garages, yes, sir.
I just couldn't remember. We've got a garage, one car. I've never seen enough parking, so that's what I'm going to stick with.
Yes, sir.
How many bedrooms do we average?
Um, two to three on this site. We hadn't finalized it yet, so I can't say for sure.
Any further questions for the applicant? Staff? Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve?
We have a motion for approval. Do we have a second?
A second.
Motion and a second, let's vote.
Ms. Jones?
Yes, but I do like parking.
Mr. Lavender?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
No.
Mr. Holland?
Yes.
Alright, contact staff for next steps, good luck. Alright, at this time, we will close the new business portion of the meeting, and we will move back into the public hearing. And we will move back in for miscellaneous 23-00003 and miscellaneous 23-00004.
Sure, thank you. So, this is consideration for recommendation for the Unified Development Ordinance and the complimentary new zoning map that goes along with it. The consultant's going to make a little bit more of a summary presentation during new business, but just wanted to kind of introduce this and tee up the public hearing.
Okay, is that all you've got for that?
Yes.
Okay, so can we have the consultants up, I guess, if they have anything they'd like to say?
Besides, I'm getting old. I'll save the formal presentation and comments for that unless we're at that stage, but there again, just.
Yeah, that'll come during new business.
Perfect.
So, okay. Alright, so I have two people that have signed up to speak on the UDOs. Sherri Barrett?
My name is Sherri Barrett. I'm representing Upstate Forever. Our address is 507 Pettigrew Street in Greenville. Going to make my comments very brief. We pretty much narrowly focused on just a couple of areas of the code, so I will speak primarily to those. But Upstate Forever strongly urges the Planning Commission to recommend the City of Greer Unified Development Ordinance and Zoning Map to Greer City Council for adoption. Once enacted, the Unified Development Ordinance and Zoning Map will usher in a new era of managing growth throughout the city. Residents and other community stakeholders have participated and been heard throughout the process. Upstate Forever has been an active participant on the city's Stakeholder Committee, reviewing early drafts and engaging with staff and the consultant team in discussions focused primarily on a framework to allow accessory dwelling units and missing middle housing types. Missing middle housing is house-scale buildings with more than one unit in walkable areas. Think duplex, triplex, quadruplex, for example. These forms of housing support a more diverse range of housing options for our growing Upstate community and add gentle density where appropriate. We ask for your vote tonight to recommend the ordinance and zoning map for adoption by Greer City Council. Thank you for your leadership and your service.
Thank you. Alright, Ms. Betsy Potter?
My name is Betsy Potter. I live at 116 West Turk Street in the oldest neighborhood in Greer, and in the proposed downtown transitional overlay. I'm a member of the Board of Architectural Review, and I am also co-owner of three buildings and a business in the proposed historic district overlay. The public comments you've received include my input about specific sections of the UDO. I encourage you to read them and give them your full consideration, if you haven't already. Tonight, I'd like to focus on my final comment. I propose historic district overlays for my neighborhood, as well as the Greer Mill neighborhood, as well as protection for eligible individual properties. Greenville has seven designated historic neighborhoods. We can have two. In 2017, a Historic Resources Survey commissioned and paid for by the City of Greer identified 13 historic resources recommended for listing in the National Register of Historic Places (NRHP), in addition to those that are already listed in the city. This included 11 buildings and two districts, the Arlington-Davenport Mountain View Neighborhood, which is my neighborhood, and the Greer Mill and Village, because they retain a relatively high level of integrity compared to other neighborhoods in Greer. I understand that there is a housing crisis coming, and it is evident from the UDO that the city is desperately trying to provide the needed housing. Here is my question. Is it necessary or advisable to endanger the Greer we all know and love, the Greer that is attracting this growth, in order to accomplish this goal? The UDO promotes density while drastically reducing the area offered protection of our architectural heritage. We can do better. With the coming growth, it becomes all the more important to protect the things that make Greer special and unique, the things that brought us here and remind us of our heritage. It already says in the Greer Code of Ordinances, Chapter 38, you can look it up, that we are supposed to protect, preserve, and enhance the distinctive architectural and cultural heritage of the city. That's in our ordinances. The current version of the UDO does not do this. What it does say in the UDO is that one of our duties as officials of the city is to review, recommend, and designate individual historic properties and historic districts. I take this to mean that we all have a duty to protect the city's historic buildings. According to the 2017 survey, Greer has an abundance of historic architecture that should be preserved. Our future generations are depending on us to preserve our heritage now. A smart city desires balanced growth. One aspect that must be balanced is the fate of our historic structures. If we do not protect them now, they may not exist in the future, or may be so altered that they are no longer representative of our history. Our current growth puts many of them in greater danger. My neighborhood is already succumbing to development pressure due to its newfound desirability. Now is the time to act, and the UDO gives us the opportunity to do so. A preservation ordinance does not prevent change. It encourages appropriate alterations and new construction that fits in with existing buildings. Studies show that having local preservation overlaid zoning districts protects historic properties and the value of those properties. Owners of historic buildings will see the value of their investments increase. With NRHP designation, these buildings would be eligible for federal and/or state tax incentives, as well as federal grants, which can promote rehabilitation and boost the economy. I propose that we take action to protect these valuable historic resources. I understand that the city is working on signage for some of our historic neighborhoods. Signage without protection is just lip service, making it look like we care about our history without actually doing anything. Let's honor our history with more than lip service by giving our neighborhoods and buildings the national honor and protection they deserve. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Alright, those are the only two folks I had signed up to speak. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak for or against the miscellaneous Alright, seeing none, we will close the public hearing for miscellaneous 00003 and 00004. And we will open the new business portion for miscellaneous 00003 and 00004. Ladies?
Sure. At this time, I'd like to defer to our consultant, Kim Lee Horn and Associates. Kelly Klepper is here as the project manager, and he's going to give a summary of what the code has in it, what we heard from our public meetings, as well as what we've changed from the public draft to the adoption draft.
For the record, Kelly Klepper with Kim Lee Horn and Associates, and it's always a pleasure to be here. Thanks for always having a wonderful environment for us to come up and work and enjoy this. I want to go through a couple of things. As Ashley said, we've been at this for a little bit of time. There's been a lot of input, there's been a lot of interaction, there's been a lot of dialogue with a number of groups between our stakeholder group early on, as well as the community workshops. There's been a lot of online comment, a lot of consideration for some things to think about as we were going through the UDO, and more importantly, to come to this point where we are in the process, which is asking and seeking a recommendation for the update of not only the UDO, but also the zoning map itself. So, when we start thinking about a few things, we couldn't be remiss if I didn't say that. Definitely appreciate the efforts that we've had in working with Ashley and Claire and Heather. This is an incredible team that's very dedicated to the city, so in addition to all the other responsibilities they've had, they've been also helping facilitate the overall update of this UDO document. When we start thinking about the UDO, we start thinking about what is a UDO, what is a Unified Development Ordinance, we're going to basically go through, oops, very happy fingers there, a kind of a, like I said, what is the UDO? Where did we land? Where did we start from, and what was kind of the genesis behind this? We're going to briefly go through a series of the sections and where we are in the process, and then more importantly, what we heard and what we changed. I will say that there were comments that we received during this process that we acknowledged we did not make modifications to the code, because in staff's opinion, in our professional opinion, either as planners and landscape architects, urban designers and engineers, we didn't believe it was the most appropriate thing for the UDO. Now, I will say that there's a lot of validity, there's a lot of great comments, a lot of things that were considered. Nothing was off the table, to say the least, when we first started this process, but more importantly, I will say when we started this process, we were building off of the city's comprehensive plan. That was the baseline for everything that you're going to see in here tonight. So, everything from the nomenclature, when we start talking about traditional neighborhoods and some of these activity centers, a lot of that language, a lot of the guidance came out of the comprehensive plan. So, what is the UDO? It's a unified set of documents. Some people will say it's your zoning code, some people will say it's your land development regulations or your subdivision regulations, but ultimately, is all those things wrapped up. Unfortunately, I would say that this is your new UDO, but one of my staff forgot to hit two-sided on this, so it looks a lot thicker than it is, but we did simplify, we did update. Thank you, Ashley, that's a lot better visual than mine. And more importantly, there again, we were starting the introduction of some new topics and some new approaches to the city's development regulations. There again, building off of that comprehensive plan and then moving forward to this point. Unfortunately, during that process, we also ran into this little event called COVID, and that slowed us down just a slight bit. Unfortunately, I know that that event caused a lot of delays and a lot of communities' updates, but there, more importantly, we continued to move forward, we just could not have some of the in-person meetings that we were thinking of and wanting to do at that point. So, at the end of the day, what are we talking about? The UDO refines the current regulations that you have. It establishes new zoning districts. It establishes or creates some consolidated overlays. There were over, I mean, an over an abundance of overlays that basically said the same thing, but being applied in different portions of the city. So, one of the things we said, especially when it came to some of this, is if it's doing the same thing, why not just use the same types of approaches, especially when the standards were exactly the same? We did provide regulations for how, you know, the built environment will develop. We provided additional design and development standards outside of the historic district, and that's, I know that's a key component we want to be able to talk about, and I'm definitely going to defer to staff for some of the historical components of that. But we also developed and created enhanced buffers between, you know, certain types of uses, between residential and non-residential, and also allowing for administrative adjustments so that some things can be done by staff, providing that they are within the context of the code itself. You have a professionally trained staff, let us and let them do their jobs. So, what does it look like at the end of the day? This is the proposed layout. It's a series of sections. Each section has a different type of approach, everything from administration to the zoning to design and development standards, all the way to general definitions. One of the things that we did when we were looking at this was not only to sit there and look at the districts that you have, but also the list of uses. Some of the definitions that went along with those, and also starting to realize that some of the uses listed either were out of date, or the code did not accommodate or address uses that have been developed since the last UDO. And I always go back and start thinking about and using this bad dad joke or bad analogy about five, six years ago, who had ever heard of pickleball? Most people hadn't. So, similar things like that, when we start talking about QSRs, those quick server restaurants, when we start thinking about some of the standards and how they're being applied, we started doing the deep dive and understanding, not just looking at the city's code, but also what's going on around you, what's also going around the southeast, you know, portions of the United States, and then there again, working in this environment for over 31 years, what works and what doesn't? So, we start, and I'm there again, just kind of briefly go through some of this, we started adding some additional graphics and, excuse me, matrices, so it's a little bit easier for people to be able to understand what's being proposed and what portions of the process. Who reviews what? Who makes the final decisions? And what are those processes require? So, there again, each of the sections, within Section 1, Administration lays out the exact types of applications, the process, what's required, and who is the ultimate decision-maker in that grouping. From a zoning perspective, there is a consolidation of a number of districts that you have at this point. One of the things that we started looking at early on was where are your districts mapped? How much property is actually zoned as either an R10, an R15, an R20, and some of the other standards that you have? And then also starting to look at the setbacks and the uses that went along with that, and then where were those zoning districts applied? So, part of the discussion was to streamline some of those districts, creating new districts, and one of the things that you'll see is, all the districts that we've provided are not mapped, and there was a reason. There are a couple of districts, including some of the mixed use, or the business technology, or the high-density residential, that are there for the city to be able to utilize, consistent with the comprehensive plan, but not necessarily mapped at this point, so it's a tool for future use. Each one of these has, there again, is basis in the comprehensive plan, and then moving forward with a series of standards. Now, I will say, when we started looking at a lot of these districts, we also did an in-depth analysis on the lot sizes within those districts, so that we, in essence, knew what we were looking at from the ground level up. We understood that we were not taking somebody's property that was, we'll say, an R7.5 and making that an R15. That would, in essence, be akin to a takings. So, we started looking at what are the underlying lot sizes within each of those districts, and that's the reason we started to develop and identify a couple of things as we went. The zoning map, I know there's a larger scale copy in the back. The districts that you see on here are those that are mapped, including, like I said, a number of the new districts and the consolidated, consistent with that table that we just had up on the screen. The overlays and design standards, there again, the historic district overlay, that is the area that's encompassed by the current historic overlay, and I will say, I appreciate the fact that there was an additional study that was done in 2017. That was not taken forward, and there again, I'm definitely going to defer to staff on this one by City Council at that point, so that was not within our purview to expand the historic zoning designation. Now, if the City Council does decide to do that, then this code and this UDO is already set up to accommodate those types of standards moving forward with some very minimal changes. So, there again, looking at the historic district, looking at the downtown traditional or transitional overlay, the entryway, so basically those corridors coming into and out of the city, and then one that, well, we'll say that we did not touch was the Greenville-Spartanburg Airport overlay. That one we did not touch for a couple of reasons. One, because it is a federal aviation, as well as a State Department of Transportation series of standards that goes with that on protection of what we call surfaces in some of those areas. So, there again, we just rolled that information straight into the UDO, and I will say, we did meet with the representatives from GSP on a number of occasions to confirm and assume that their regulations, what was the most up-to-date, and ensure that those were being adopted as part of this UDO. So, where are the proposed overlays? You can see, and it looks like the small, small area in the middle, that is that area that is the defined historic district. The area in red is that transitional overlay, which is very akin, much akin to the Greer stations, and then also looking at those corridors coming in and out of the city. Kind of looks like a series of spider webs, but there again, when we started looking at East and West Point Set, we started looking at Main Street, we started looking at a lot of different things. Yes, we did start to increase and enhance the protections within those areas, especially from a parking, a landscaping and buffering, as well as a science perspective, and also looking at some of the design standards that we had at play. Did we adopt the historic district regulations that are within that core of the city? No, there again, that was not the direction that we were given by the city, however, that is something that the city absolutely could pursue subsequent to this UDO. The uses and standards, this is where we start to say, okay, in addition to the districts and how we define those, what can you do within the districts themselves? We created a series of tables. We basically gave you this quick visual that shows within the RS, or you know, within these specific types of districts, what can you do and where? And then more importantly, when we start to better or further define some of those uses through what we call use definitions, those are also provided within this section as well. So, if there is an accessory dwelling unit, or if there is an accessory use that's associated with a residential district, it's defined in this portion of the code, and then also, if there are any additional standards, we'll say, like with drive-throughs, or with this, I'll call it the message boards, or even car wash components, where adjacent to residential, there are additional standards that are applied as part of the use standards and definitions. And you can see that we did have a couple of core types of use groups, whether it's residential or non-residential, and then working our way through with the various components. Design and development standards, this is where we really amped and ramped up the game itself. There was a, you know, very little, yeah, let me start over. There was very little to limited use of graphics and illustrations within the previous code, and what we've always said is, a picture's worth a thousand words. If we can't visually understand what it is or see something, how do we know what it looks like? You've heard the, you know, the old adage about, you know, how do you, you know, if You've heard the, you know, the old adage about, you know, how do you, you know, if you have the developer, an engineer, an architect, a land use person, somebody trying to describe how to build something, you'll get five different opinions at the end of the day. So, by actually providing the illustrations, much like we've done with signage, with the buffers that you see there, as well as the parking and the interior landscaping within that, it's very clear and a useful tool that staff can now point to and go, okay, this is a wall sign. This is how we measure it. This is what's being defined as part of that square footage. What is a type-one buffer? What does it include? Where do the trees go in relationship to the property line? Is there, is there not a wall? And where does that start to be placed in the context of this? And then, more importantly, also, kind of, I know, very near and dear to the Marisart, the tree preservation components being within the landscape provisions as well. Building and site design standards, you know, the primary focus in this section was on the non-residential components of the city, so that we start to look at what are those design enhancements that we want as our commercial buildings continue to be developed or redeveloped? So, you're looking at non-residential. One of the things that you'll see, you may see here, is like, well, where's the residential? Funny enough, not funny enough, I should say, your state law actually prohibits certain types of architectural design standards if they're not within historic guidelines and historic district. There's also some provisions and some case laws out there regarding the use of residential design standards, especially in the context of, does it create, I'm not going to say takings, or a legal contract zoning, but there are instances in case law across the state where that has occurred. So, there again, the provisions and the focus on this are the non-residential that you see there, everything from site design to pedestrian to buildings, all the way to and including industrial. The subdivision regulations, this is where the engineers actually are working to develop site design, grading, utilities, roadways, you know, your utilities and drain adjustments, and a number of other things that go in with the subdivision regulations as well. That also gets into a portion of it, like you see with 7.5, with recreational vehicles. So, there are provisions within the subdivision development standards that actually address those as well. And then, lastly, the general definitions. So, those are the definitions that are used throughout the code to define specific terms. Previously, they were scattered throughout the various ordinances. We've refined those, we've included those within Section 8 of this particular U D O, so that, there again, as you see something that is defined, or a use that needs to be defined, it's incorporated into this portion of the U D O. So, where are we in the process? So, we've had a number of stakeholder interviews. We had the council kickoff. We've met with this group. We've had steering committee meetings, both in-person and virtual. We've had a number of, I'll say, stakeholder opportunities, including the draft being published on the city's website. So, we are coming in towards, I'll say, the tail end of this project, and with a positive recommendation tonight, we'll be moving forward to the city council for their adoption towards the end of this year. And there again, the realization is, we know that the U D O needs to be, you know, be able to move forward to meet certain criteria, but there again, we've been working with staff, we've worked with the stakeholders, we listened to that group to come up with a number of items throughout the update. And there's been a lot of great comments. We heard comments on signage. We heard comments on the landscaping and buffering. We heard comments on parking and trees and the setbacks and some of those things, and what does count or constitute an on-street versus an off-street parking, especially in a residential area? So, you know, when we've had those meetings, we've had those discussions, and there again, we had, over the course of two days, more than 100 individuals showed up, either to this room or across the street, to provide their comments. Those were the individuals that came out, provided those written comments. We had opportunities to meet with residents, both within the city as well as just outside the city, so that there was the opportunity to provide those comments. There again, as part of this process, there has been an open dialogue with staff, and we've received a number of comments from the citizens and the residents, and even some of the development community, about things that they've either had questions about, things that they weren't sure about, or things that they would like to recommend throughout this process. And there again, we've got a running list of all of those comments and how and if they were addressed or to what degree. I'm not going to go through all the comments, but staff did an incredible job of summarizing what we heard over the course of the in-person, as well as the virtual workshop components. There again, all of those, and you can see that there was a response and action, so that individuals, you know, if they made the comment, they can actually see in this document how and what we did from a response from a staff's perspective. There again, some very detailed, some of them fairly lengthy comments, very much appreciated. And I don't see her here tonight, but I wish Ms. Lois was here. Lois was, is a 91-year-old resident of the city, has been here pretty much all of her life, lives just outside the downtown area. I think I spent probably about an hour with her, and she had some of the best questions. What is the U D O going to do to my property? What's it going to do, you know, when she's 91? She goes, when I'm 104, and I'm still looking at, what am I going to do with my property? How do I maintain it? And what happens when I do ultimately pass away? What are my kids going to be left with? There again, in 31 years of doing this, that was probably one of the best, most, I'll say, most in-depth conversations I've had with an individual on the code. So, there again, I wish she was here. I don't know if she's listening in, but if somebody does know Ms. Lois, please let her know how much we appreciated it. And with that, we, I know we went through this in a fairly brief manner, high-level summary. I'd be happy to answer any questions that she may have at this point.
All right. That's pretty quick for 300. How many pages are we told? Board questions?
Respect to the historical overlay. You mentioned that the reason that the current historical overlay that is in the plan is because that was the prior overlay that was approved, correct?
That is correct. Yes, sir.
Well, I mean, I think there's a huge amount of work being put into it. Thank you. Thank you. Got some more parking? Well, there, you know, we didn't get everything everybody wanted, but I don't think anybody ever thought that would happen.
I guess, could you elaborate a little bit on the historic? Questions kind of came for us earlier. No, no, absolutely. And I definitely will say that I appreciate, because I also had a long discussion with her at the workshops, there was a lot of energy and effort that went into that historic survey back in 2017. I mean, I'm never going to discount those types of surveys by any means. There again, you know, that was something, and there again, Ashley, you can also correct me if I say something incorrect here, the city council did not adopt the boundaries of that. That's not to say that they couldn't moving forward in the future, but they did not at that time. So, that's the reason we did not propose to expand the historic district overlay beyond the current boundaries that the city has.
Well, and I'll follow up on that. We actually, the first kind of work session that we did have with council, we actually did propose to expand the overlay, taking the Board of Architectural Reviews recommendations, and there was not interest in expanding that overlay. So, what we really did was, our current downtown overlay is, was written with the assistance from SHIPO, State Historic Preservation Office, and so that used to apply to kind of that red area, or it still does at this point. But what this code proposes is to keep the strictest standards applying to the green, the designated historic district that's designated by the state, and then the red area surrounding it is downtown transitional. So, what that does is still provide some protections, but is not as strict as the current downtown overlay. And then, those standards also apply very similarly to the entryway corridors leading into downtown. So, that was direction from stakeholders, council, over the last few years, that as our city kind of grows and changes downtown, that some of the buildings that are not on trade in Victoria, that our standards were a little too strict and didn't allow for kind of a little bit more modern to fit in with, with our current district. So, that is where we ended up. Certainly, we can take recommendations or considerations to council as well, but I did want to clarify that.
Did the boundaries of the overlay change as far as the transitional, not the downtown entryway overlays?
The transitional follows almost exactly the current downtown overlay, and then the historic district, again, just is strung to just our historic district. Like, the area that applies to the green in the code used to apply to the green and red. And then, there were a few areas on the boundary that had two...
Where's the green?
Oh, sorry, the little, I guess it's mint or blue.
Inside the red.
Right there, inside the red. Yeah. So, that's our historic district. Sorry, my colors might be off, too. I don't know what color we would call that. The longer I look at it, the less I know what color that is. There were a few properties on the boundaries that had two overlays. They had downtown, downtown overlay currently, and Highway 101, or one of our other districts, the highway transitional that was on Point Set. So, the ones that had two overlays, we took a look at and picked the one that we felt was most appropriate, so that we got rid of kind of dual overlays. But for the most part, that follows the boundary of our current downtown overlay. The entryway overlays are, some of them are new. Some of them were covered under the Highway 101, or the downtown, or the, sorry, the transitional, highway transitional overlay. But again, we've consolidated those into one overlay that applied to all of the corridors. And we did add some of South Main, and then Arlington Avenue was added at the request of one of our council members.
So, I guess, looking at the entry, I guess, that's, looks like where Walgreens would be, or where it is. Based on these new standards, Walgreens couldn't go there as their site exists today. Parking has to be in the rear or side?
Right, side and rear.
Even the little strip mall, I guess, there's like a ABC store, laundry mat or something the same thing.
Yeah, I believe it has a restriction for one row of parking, so there could be some in front, but the majority would need to be the side and rear to try and activate the corridor. And of course, any building or site that is already existing, as you know, is considered grandfathered in and legally non-conforming, so they would not have to change anything.
As far as the modifications, if they go and outfit that structure, because that obviously downtown's that.
It depends.
That's all, all residential homes that have been converted to business.
Sure.
If they go, they're trying to add on or spend usually sometimes 50% more of the value.
Yeah, it depends on what it is. The landscaping, parking area landscaping, and the buffering is a little different. I think one's 25%, one's 50%, and it would be anything new. So, if they expanded their parking, only the area that was being expanded, as long as it was under 25%, would have to comply to the new rules.
So, in the grand scheme of all that has been done during this project, is it going to make it easier for the applicants that come to the city that want to build here, renovate, modify, new? Is it going to make the process easier for them to understand?
I sure hope so. I mean, that was one of the goals, was to avoid having to go to two different documents that sometimes contradicted each other, have one place to look, easy to navigate, more charts, more graphics. I can't say that it will, but I can say that I hope it does, that that was certainly the intent of how we laid it out.
And Mr. Chairman, if I could, just to expand on that, the proposed U D O does not open the door for new development to come in haphazard. It just makes it, like, as Ashley said, makes it easier to understand and what the expectations are. There's more predictability in what somebody needs to do or not be able to do.
Because we already have a pretty lengthy process that we go through, that I'm told other areas do not require. I mean, PAX is a good example of that, right?
Um, I guess. I mean, most jurisdictions I've worked for have some sort of pre-submital meeting. I would say ours is unique in that we do involve partner agencies, and we do intend to keep it that way. We think it's really beneficial. We have modified that process in the last year, and I think it's made good strides, certainly has made our review a lot easier when we get site development plans coming through. But I will say, our process, I mean, rezonings and annexations, variances, I mean, in other jurisdictions can take four to six months, and that is not what we see here, and I don't believe that will change. And hopefully, again, as we mentioned, or I've mentioned before, as we did our work sessions, you know, we were really overusing the D R D and P D zoning. And so, hopefully, again, one of the goals was to create zoning districts and regulations that would allow certain things by right where appropriate, and have a place for those, and have regulations for those. D R Ds are kind of, they're an enforcement struggle for staff, but also for builders and developers. We've had some that have adopted the statement of intent, and then they sell to builders, and, or they're trying to sell to builders, and builders come, and they're like, well, we can't do that. I'm like, well, that's what's adopted, so that's what you're held to. So, again, I hope that it is a little easier to navigate. Of course, we're still going to have those projects that are unique, and we'll have to use that D R D process, but this should offer kind of streamlined, and I really do want to emphasize what Kelly said, the predictability.
And if and when this is adopted, as it's currently written, how long do we plan to use this new document before we upgrade it again?
So, I mean, a wholesale update? I, I mean, I hope it's a long time. I've said every single Plated Commissioned, every single council work session, that we fully expect that the first year, and maybe even the first two years, that we will be bringing updates regularly. As we test out these standards on new projects, we're going to find quirks or kinks or things that need to be upgraded. So, we fully expect to be bringing quarterly updates, more if needed, but at the very least, we plan to be bringing quarterly updates to the plan. But I mean, the goal is not to have to do a wholesale kind of two-year overhaul. Our codes were adopted in the late 90s, so this has kind of been 20 years coming. It certainly is a living document, and we do expect to bring updates to you guys for consideration over the next year, 18 months, two years.
And the people who adopted it in the late 90s had no comprehension of what would happen in the next 20 years, 30 years?
Yeah, I mean, the code wasn't, the code wasn't all bad, but it was a little disjointed, it was a little out of date. Needed some love.
And Mr. Chairman, if I could, just kind of circle back on something that you're mentioning. You're absolutely correct. Yeah, I went through that fairly quick for 300-plus pages. This is one of those documents and one of those presentations. We could be here for 30 minutes and hit high points and allow you all to ask questions and engage that. I could stand up here for three hours and talk, which I don't think you want to have me do. But more importantly, you know, I will say that, you know, we've been at this for some period of time. This is, you know, this has been out there for the public. We would encourage you all to ask questions, even after tonight, of staff, as we're continuing to kind of move forward. You know, if there are questions that you receive from, you know, residents, get with Claire, Heather, and Ashley, because they can also help kind of clarify the message or share the message, so that somebody knows, oh, on page 261 is that portion of the code. Okay, now we see it.
I may have missed it. Is there like a P U D element in this?
There is a P U D. It's actually under the P D. So, there's the D R D, because we needed to retain that existing, but then there is a P D process. There's also a cluster residential subdivision process that we've identified. There again, all three of those, I mean, the P D and the cluster are identified within that, but there is, there are allowances...
that, but there is, there are allowances for the PDs. There's also allowances, I'm just going to kind of take a little bit of liberty on alternative parking plans and certain ways to do, I'll say, different ways of doing something that's in the code, whether it's parking or landscaping and some of the other things, that still require full-blown review by this body and/or the council. Start moving on me. I wasn't touching it.
I don't.
Oh, okay.
Okay, just a reminder to everyone, we are here tonight to make a recommendation to city council. City council will start the process of voting on this, it looks like, in their November meetings. So whatever decision we make tonight, again, is just a recommendation to them, and I'm sure they're going to have questions of the developer of this. And I encourage everybody to come to these council meetings, which will be the second and fourth Tuesday in November in this room.
Are buffers based on use or zoning districts? How do y'all?
They are based on the zoning districts now. So now there's a table that has zoning district kind of A and B and what it abuts, and then you follow the table and that's the number.
Somewhere in this large document, there was talking about height restrictions in commercial areas, residential areas, and some of the height restrictions were 35 to 40 feet in the commercial areas.
I think mostly that's neighborhood center, so those are, that will probably be sprinkled in with more of neighborhoods and residential. Most of our zoning district heights, we actually increased before the adoption draft, or before even the public draft, because that was a comment that council gave us throughout their work sessions. So we did take a second look at them, but we can certainly look at them again if you feel like any of them are too, are not generous enough.
One thing I did notice, I guess we have maximum lot coverage for a previous area. How is that even enforceable? I guess, I mean, you know, I forget some of the numbers or whatever, but I know like 40% of the area cannot be, is that structure?
It's structure.
So I want to build a huge large pool deck after the fact, and how does that all get calculated? How does that get enforced, I guess, in today?
Well, so they have to apply for permits for any accessory structure and/or pool, so it would be enforced through that for a permit. Or if it's a commercial site, it would have to have a major modification.
Bramble County, or City of Bramble, excuse me, has a pretty strenuous pervious and pervious application process that requires a survey of every improvement on the property. Driveways are in the calculation, decks are in the calculation, forges are in the calculation, overhead, anything covered by roof is in the calculation, and all that is relative to the lot square footage. And, yeah.
I've not heard positive things about that.
Well, yeah, I said they have a process.
Which is why we have limited it to structures only.
Structures only?
Yeah, that is a new.
So full decks wouldn't count?
Correct. Maximum coverage is something new in the code, so again, we did sort of go a little bit more on the conservative side and start with structures. Now we may eventually kind of get to just pervious, impervious, but we're not quite there yet.
Do we have any further questions for staff or the developer? You are, you're very quiet, Ms. Judy.
I'm calling you out, ma'am.
In the suburban neighborhood standards, why is the non-residential building height maximum higher than the residential? As it is...
35 for residential, 40?
Same or more restrictive for the other zoning areas?
So a couple of things with respect to that. Part of that was also getting into construction standards from a residential versus a non-residential. Also, when you start looking at, let me get to section, between sections two and four, the types of non-residential that you can do within a suburban neighborhood are fairly limited in nature as well. But there again, we were accommodating roof pitch as well as, I'll call it, some of the non-habitable areas that you typically don't have with a residential structure, including HVAC and things of that nature.
Would you prefer if they were equal or less?
They're, they're equal or less than every other zoning except for suburban neighborhood.
I mean, that's not a big issue.
Is that just a typo or?
Offhand, I couldn't say, but we'll certainly take a look and compare it to the other districts.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's not a critical item to say, oh, no, we shall keep 40 feet by any means. To the contrary, if that's, that's, one, as Ashley said, we'll go back and look at some of our earlier notes and versions to make sure it was not a typo, and if it was, apologies. If not, then...
We'll put that on January's revision.
Yeah. Still have time.
And during the revision, is it a revision or an amendment process that we would be going through?
It would be a text amendment. So it would come to this board for a public hearing.
It would go to the zoning board of appeals or something like that for...
No, sir. It would, yeah.
Anything in here that's, that needs to be added, subtracted, tweaked, it would come before us.
Correct. That would be a text amendment, and that would come for a public hearing with the Planning Commission and then two readings of city council.
So the dwelling live work, I guess, and I'm not too familiar with, I guess, locations amongst the different residential, non-residential areas. But I guess, I like the table as far as, you know, use at right, or special exception or not, you know, I guess, business technology, we don't allow for a dwelling unit in business technology? I know, is that one of the ones that you said that wasn't mapped?
That is correct. Yeah, so business technology, I believe we do allow for a watchman type of setup, but it's not like a missing middle or affordable or attainable housing component within the BT district. One of the thoughts on that is to preserve and protect the employment and economic generators that are or could be utilizing the BT district itself without kind of starting to dilute those down with additional residential.
So I guess it's not permitted in suburban neighborhood district, but does that, what if somebody just operated, you know, an accounting firm or did some footwork or something out in their house?
Sure.
How does that affect existing conditions?
Yeah, that would be considered a home occupation. So if, if it's not where you're having a lot of customers coming in, like, some people have apartments over retail. It is, yeah. So you could still have accounting or, you know, one customer at a time type situation, I think, is what the home occupation says. I'll have to check. But yes, you could still run internet business and work from home and have that as your home address. That would be considered a home occupation. So we do have a couple of retail businesses along point set that do have living spaces above, or like Namaste has a few apartment rentals attached to it, the spa downtown. So that would be more of a true live work, that it's a business that could be a business on its own, along with a residential unit. Did that answer that? I'm not sure I did. Okay.
I was kind of thinking that was the same. No, I mean, I applaud everybody. I mean, I know it's a lot of work, several years, a lot of working off hard, but I mean, it's, nothing's a perfect document. It's definitely a living document. I'm sure it will be, and we'll find out.
I would love to think I'm that good, but this is not a conference of plan.
So do we have any further questions? Are we ready to make a motion?
I move that we recommend council adopt the UDO. Is it two things for adoption, we're recommending?
Yes, UDO and zoning map.
UDO and zoning map.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Let's vote.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lavender?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Mr. Holland?
Yes. Thank you for your hard work, staff again.
Well, thank y'all as well. You've been through it, too.
I know y'all, you know, listen to us complain about, you know, we need to change this, we need to change that. I hope we'll see a lot of that, and it makes me feel good that we can come back and make amendments to this. That's all the new business we have. Do we have any other business?
Staff did just want you to save the date for the board appreciation kind of luncheon that we have each year. It's going to be Thursday, December 7th at noon. I'm not sure which hall, but one of these halls here. So we'll send out a reminder email soon, but just did want to let you know that we do have that date kind of bookmarked.
That's Pearl Harbor Day. Is the city closed on Pearl Harbor Day?
Oh, it is not.
Relate it, I don't know.
Is there other events that we need to?
That's Pearl Harbor Day.
We're not closed, so.
Thursday, December the 7th. Okay, I'm hoping everybody received email from staff concerning our training. We have training. We have to get it done by the end of the year. Some of us have, well, most of us have done...
Two hours.
Some ops, some of the training. I think Mr. Booker's, you have to do six, don't you?
Yeah, he does have a little bit more time than you. He does have a little bit more time than you. He has a year.
You've got time.
Yeah, I did recently send out a webinar that had a good opportunity, so if you guys are able to take advantage of that, I think that'd be a good option to get your last hour, and I could resend that if anyone needs it.
Register and then they'll...
And it was a free event, so you just register and get a link sent.
Again, thank you all for coming tonight and participating in the process. I was really expecting a huge crowd tonight. I'm kind of sad that we don't have a huge crowd, but I guess either people aren't interested or they trust what's happening. I hope it's the latter. But if you still want to talk about this, please come to council meetings, second and fourth Tuesday of November, here in this room, unless something happens and they have to meet somewhere else. And I guess with no other business before us, we'll make a motion for adjournment.
I should adjourn?
I second.